I'd like to call the December the 13th Alzerner County Board of Education Meeting to order. At this time, I would like to recognize two students from Stony Point Elementary. Chloe Lawes, a second grader, daughter of Christopher and Holly Lawes. And Paisley Smith, second grader, daughter of Andrew and Kara Smith. If I could get these two young ladies to come up and lead the pledge.
Attention, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, girls.
Board members, you have your agenda in front of you. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second. Got a motion by Board Member Ryan and a second by Board Member Bowman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll recognize Dr. Hefner at this time for honors and recognition.
Thank you Chairman Robinson, Vice Chairman Agüez, and board members. And a special welcome I extend to our guest. This is my favorite meeting of the entire year. And the reason is because we get to recognize our Christmas card winners. And that's how we will start this evening's honors and recognitions. And I say, I had written this previously. We now turn to my favorite highlight of the year, the holiday card contest for the school district. This year, we had 236 entries. And we invited county employees, like the Soil and Water Division team, to help us judge. Also, we included in the judging district office staff and employees from the local library. The student winners will have their artwork showcased on the official district Christmas card. And that will actually be sent throughout the state tomorrow to all of the other school systems. And I even mail some to some special friends. Students this evening will receive copies of their entries. They have been made into holiday cards that you can share with your friends and families. Also, they are going to receive a framed copy of their entry and a special gift card. So I would ask that Board Member Bowman, please join me. I'm going to start with the pre-K through second grade division. And I ask you to join me in giving a big congratulations to Caroline Bowles. She is a first grader at Bethlehem Elementary School. Listen, I've known your daddy Jesse since he was a student at Bethlehem Elementary School. Well, I want to know if she's better behaved than you were. She is. I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Jesse Bowles was a wonderful student. And Caroline, if you will stand in front of the picture that you drew. We're going to get a group picture in just a minute also. Thank you. Another round of applause for her. In the third through fifth grade division, I would ask you to join me in congratulating Isabella Heathcox. Isabella is a third grade student at Ellendale Elementary School. Parents, parents, do you want to come up? Candace, are you sure? Okay, okay. Another round of applause, please. In our sixth through eighth grade division, please join me in congratulating Hadley Walsh, a sixth grade student at West Alexander Middle School. April, do you all want to come up and join in the picture?
Yes.
Are you sure? Come on, come on mama. And Hadley, for the record, I have got some good stories on your mama. We used to, we used to work together. So all students stay after and I'll move in. And then last, but certainly not least, in the ninth through 12th grade division, please join me in congratulating Megan Parker, an 11th grade student at Alexander Central High School. Family, you want to come up and get in the picture? No? Okay. One more.
One more for her.
And then we're going to do a group picture. And I ask you to please join me again. Congratulations to our student artists. One more, one more. Sorry, sorry, sorry. And then families, I always give you all an opportunity to make some photographs too, if you want to do that before I dismiss them. Okay, make sure you get your bags. And send those cards with pride. I'm so proud of you. Great job, guys. Thank you. Board Member Reese, will you come and help me with the next awards? This evening, I'm also pleased to recognize some elementary school students who expressed their love and appreciation of their teachers in the North Carolina School Board Association poster contest. Four students from our area received honorable mentions for their entries in this statewide contest. And I have to add this little tidbit. To my knowledge, this is the first time we've had students compete. So I am super thrilled that students decided to compete this year. But I'm going to start with Ella Carswell. Ella is a kindergarten student from Bethlehem Elementary School. Way to go Ella.
And so this is Ella Clark, and Ella.
Wonderful. Ella, let's give her another round of applause. Can I see Mr. Draper in the audience? Can we get you to take her certificate with you tonight? Next, we are going to recognize Malia Lewis, a fourth grade student at Bethlehem Elementary School. Next, we would like to recognize Rachel Dagenhart, a first grade student at Sugarloaf Elementary School.
Good job, baby.
And the final award in this particular area goes to River Jones, a fifth grade student at Sugarloaf Elementary School. Sweetheart, will you turn your certificate around?
Great, thank you. Okay, great.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Another round of applause. Board Member Ryan, will you help me with the final awards? Tonight, we recognize campuses and staff who met or exceeded growth on 2021-2022 state tests with a certificate from the Department of Public Instruction and the State Board of Education. Those schools that met growth in the expected growth category include Stony Point Elementary School. And Mr. Palmer, if you have any staff with you, I would like everybody from Stony Point to come for a picture. Just you, you're so low, okay. Let's do individual and group, please. And next, the school that met expected growth, Alexander Early College. Congratulations. You exceeded. Okay, sorry. Alexander Virtual Academy. And it's Melinda Glenn here. Well, let's give them a round of applause. And then the next category, those that exceeded growth. My apologies, Early College. We will start with Alexander Central High School. Congratulations. Mr. Lael, do you have any staff here by chance? Ah, Cat, come up. We'll call you out. Wonderful. Also exceeding expected growth, Alexander's Early College. And I know that we have a crowd from the Early College. Come up. And the last school exceeding expected growth, West Alexander Middle School. Come on, Andy. And then the last state recognition, Alexander's Early College. They are being recognized for having a 98% graduation rate last year. Congratulations. Wonderful.
We'd like to thank all of our folks that attended tonight for honors and recognitions. If anyone chooses to leave at this time, feel free to. If you choose to stay for the meeting, we'd be happy to have you as well. I'll give just a minute for some transition out of the room. All right, we have come to the public comment portion of our agenda per North Carolina General Statute 115(c)51. And we do have one person signed up for public comment. I'm going to go ahead and read the rules of public comment at this time. First of all, each person signed up to speak will have three minutes to make his or her remarks. Each person signed up to speak will only be entitled to the time allotted to them and the time may not be relinquished to another speaker. Only one spoke person will be allowed to speak for a group or individuals wishing to address the board on the same issue. Speakers will be acknowledged by the board chairman in the order in which their names appear on the sign-up sheet. Speakers will address the board from the front of the room and begin their remarks by stating their names. Comments that are deemed obscene, profane, or personal attacks on a board member or a school employee will be caused for ending a particular speaker's time as determined by the board chairperson. Persistence in such remarks by an individual shall terminate that person's privilege to address the board. The public comment to the board period is not intended to require the board to answer impromptu questions. Speakers will address all comments to the board as a whole and not one individual member of the board. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Speakers will refrain from discussion of any of the following items. Items which are closed session matters, including but not limited to the attorney-client privilege, anticipated or pending litigation, property acquisition or liquidation, or complaints about specific employees and students in open session. This is in accordance with General Statute 115(c)321 and the Open Meetings Law, which protects students and employees' records. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation. And our speaker signed up is Janine Harrington. If I mispronounced that, please feel free to. Okay. And Ms. Harrington has provided a topic for her discussion as well.
Okay, so it's mainly just questions as a concerned parent. One is the random drug testing that was performed at the high school. My only concern with that, and it's maybe not, again, maybe it's just more questions around the process in which, I guess, the superintendent, the principal come about bringing in a third-party company to perform this? Where students had to, had to provide a photo ID and it was swabbing of the mouth. Was there a reasoning why it was done this way?
We don't answer impromptu questions during public comment.
Okay. Well, then my next question would be around COVID vaccine. When you read about, you know, CDC regulations and all that, there's coming discussion between states where kids, students are going to have to have this COVID vaccine in order to be enrolled in public, public schools next year? Is that true? Is there a discussion? Is there an answer or yes or no around that?
Here, again, we don't, we don't answer questions during public comment, but we can, hopefully somebody can share with you a source to get those answers.
Well, I mean, it raises a lot of concern as a parent in what direction to send their child for education. I mean, this is a board of education meeting. So that's kind of important because I'm not for the vaccine. And I know a lot of parents may be in this room, maybe not in this room. But, I mean, if my daughter isn't going to take this vaccine and it's required by you, then what are the options? Again, you don't have answers. I get that.
I do have answers and I'll be happy to have a discussion with you at later time.
Okay. And then I know my last question is around gender identity. There's a lot of kids that are identifying as animals in our school. And I know surrounding counties have had issues. I know Cataba County is, their Board of Education said, no, they're not entertaining the idea. I know Iredell County is, they've come out and said they're not entertaining this idea of bringing in litter boxes, entertaining kids as being, identifying as an animal. Where do you stand on that?
While we don't address questions, it was stated at last month's meeting, a statement was made in regards to, two months ago, excuse me, into our position on that and the, the lack thereof that that's taking place in our school system. Your time's up. I appreciate you addressing us and hopefully someone can get you some answers to your questions.
Thank you.
Can I add about the, the meeting that was two months ago that addresses your last concern? You can go back and watch that on YouTube and I think you'll hear a statement from our school system that...
I know it was mentioned that no one had, there was no concerns around bringing in litter boxes. But my question is more, is our Board of Education, are y'all for this? Is, are you going to stand like with Cataba County, Iredell County where, no, our schools are for our students? Not students identifying as an animal walking around the hallways, howling and barking at other students?
I think if you watch that meeting, that that kind of tells you our stance on it.
Okay.
Thank you. Board members, you have your consent agenda in front of you. What is the pleasure of the board on the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second. I have a motion by Board Member Ryan to approve, a second by Board Member Dagenhart. Is there any discussion to the consent agenda? If no discussion, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye. Any opposed? None opposed. Motion carries. Now we come to the reports section of our agenda. And I will recognize Principal Andy Palmer from Stony Point Elementary School for an update.
Good, Mr. Palmer. Good evening, everybody. And welcome to the new board members and certainly the board members that are still here. I welcome you as, as well. Dr. Hefner, Mr. Chairman. Absolute pleasure to be here and get to speak to you and share some of the highlights about Stony Point. It is one of my favorite things to talk about. Maybe not necessarily in this environment. But I do enjoy Stony Point. So I have the highlights. I did include our school improvement plan. You can see it's just highlighted there. We're not going to even click on it. It's, it's okay. If you look back through that in all of your free time, there are three main goals that we're trying to cover at Stony Point. There's an academic goal, there's a social-emotional goal, and there's a leadership piece that we have lots of action steps, lots of goals, and lots of ways that we're monitoring all of these action steps and these goals. I think probably the one that would be most important to you would be the academic piece that we're working on, which is trying to increase our reading proficiency overall in the building. There are multiple ways that we are attempting to do that. I guess if you could go back a slide, I'm not sure. Thank you. We have our teacher assistants and our intervention. We actually have two very good intervention people, Lynn Looper and Marilyn Angle, that are working with us. And they are two retired teachers that we were lucky enough to pick up. And I believe that was from our central office. So those were intervention people that were hired or we were allowed to hire through some funds that the central office supplied us. So they are working very hard with our students that are showing some gaps, trying to close those gaps with intervention. And then you see our teacher assistants in that picture. That was the teacher assistance day that we just recently celebrated. And they're just absolutely fantastic. They are wonderful. They are what I call the backbone of our school. They do all of, there's no other way to say it. They do a lot of the dirty work. They do a lot of the stuff to allow the teachers to continue to teach. They are constantly pulling kids and working with them. Again, trying to achieve that overall growth, that overall proficiency increase that we're looking. What we didn't see at the very start was our, which is also part of our school improvement plan... plan, was the mission and the vision that we've adopted at Stony Point. We have come across the fact that we had a mission and a vision that was terribly long, and nobody knew what that mission and the vision was. So, we narrowed it down to the absolute basics, and we did this as a school improvement team. Well, there, there, it's right there. So, it's grow the whole child, and our vision to do that is whatever it takes. And we are behind that at Stony Point. We had a mission and a vision that rambled on and on and on, and if I would have asked anybody in my building what that mission and that vision was, they wouldn't have had a clue, including myself. So, we narrowed it down to what we actually believed in. And if you talk to anybody at our school, they know what the mission is. They know when the child shows up, what we're trying to do, and how we're going to try to do it. And if you talk to the kids, they know what the mission and the vision is. Now, some of that leadership piece that I was talking about, or the mission and vision is getting the community behind them. And we're working on that this year. We're including it in newsletters, we're trying to send it out, phone calls, messages, text messages, whatever it might be, so that the community is aware of what we're doing as well at Stony Point. Then you see our mantra down the side. I get to say this every morning, "I am smart, I am important, and I can do hard things." And one of my favorite things is as I'm doing the announcements in the office, I can hear kindergarten and first grade repeat it, because we make them say it after us. So, I say, "I am smart," and it comes back down the hall, and I say, "Oh, this is, this is just fantastic." So, that's, again, just trying to build that, we're all on the same page, we're all moving in the same direction, including our students. We brought back, we struggled a little bit, we brought back our Students of the Month and our Bus Riders just this year, and you can see it's based on our character traits. So, we have our October and our November students, and I'm just so happy that we brought this back. You don't realize how important it is to the students to be recognized. And even if it's something as simple as a certificate and a picture, now, I do need to send those pictures to the paper, make sure I get that taken care of, but they absolutely enjoyed it. And again, it's just kind of a shove in the right direction. Right here, here we go. We're all, we're all on board, we're all doing the same thing. And I have to give credit to Ms. Gurley. This is a counselor that we just picked up around this time last year, and she jumped right in, and she's looking for things to do, and this was actually one of her ideas to bring this back. So, kudos to Ms. Gurley. Just to give you an idea where we spent some of our Title I money, and again, this is all focused on trying to complete these school improvement plan goals that we have set. We do a family night at Stony Point, and we really struggled to begin, this is years ago when I got there, we'd have fifteen people show up. Well, we changed it into a trick-or-treating night at the, so as far as the kids are concerned, they're just coming to trick or treat, but the poor parents have to go through the stations, and we subject them to. So, we give them all these, we give them these free supplies, but what they have to do at each one of the stations is learn how to use the supplies to work with the students at home. And we have seen amazing results. The kids are allowed to dress up. As they go through these different stations in the building, they get candy, candy, that's it right there, they're hooked, they're in. And the parents are going through, and they're learning about these different materials so that they can actually go home and they can work with their students. We've had great success. I want to say we had probably, we have one hundred and eighty-one students right now, we were well over a hundred students that showed up for our family night. And that's a long ways from the twelve, fourteen or so that we had at the beginning. We also dumped a lot of money into our media center. You can see the seven thousand dollars to try to just update our collection that we have. Ms. Robertson does a great job spending that money and trying to make sure that our collection is something that students will use, something of their interest. She also does a really nice job talking with teachers to see what they need in the classroom. Oh, the murals. We have the mural right there that you can kind of see, and then we have one that we put in the gym, and this is part of our PBIS, just for our behavior plan that we have, and just overall morale, again. And then we paid for a teacher assistant. We have figured out process of elimination, that probably the best thing we can spend our money is bringing in people to work with our kids. And we were, through nobody's fault, we were looking at losing two teacher assistants at the beginning of the year. In fact, I believe we did end up losing one, but we were able to get one with our Title I money, and it just makes, well, it makes all the difference to have those people in the building and working directly with the kids. So, we did spend probably, of the money we get, it was probably thirty-five thousand dollars to keep a TA in the building for the...
And the loss of the TA, would you explain that as far as how that's tied with enrollment?
Oh, that's just enrollment. That's, again, there was, there's nothing you can do as far as central office or Stony Point. It is, our numbers are decreasing, and there's no other way to say it. I don't even want to share where we were at when I first got there, certainly when Dr. Curry was there years before me, what that enrollment looked like, but it's that simple, Dr. Curry. We're just losing number. So, I apologize to the board members that were here last year because you've heard this, but for the new board members, this is two of the better things that we have come up with to motivate students. We have our Paul Mart, and we have our Fun Friday. You can earn pointer bucks to go shopping at our Paul Mart if you do above and beyond things in the classroom, in the hallway, wherever we might catch you, you can earn a pointer buck. If I come and ask you, "Hey, what's the mission, what's the vision?" And you can tell me, you get a pointer buck. And they save this money up, and we have just anything you could possibly imagine in our store, and it's mostly stuff that we've found from our kids. I know I've cleaned out a ton of bins, and they absolutely love it, and they will still do anything for a pointer buck to go shopping. And then we have our Fun Friday. This was an idea from Ms. Walton, Lydia Walton, she's our instructional coach there. And this goes back a few years, but every Friday from two to three, we block that time off, and we say no electronics, really the reading and the math as well, and we do stuff that's hands-on, puzzles, we do games, we work in the media center transplanting plants, we have bird feeders outside now, anything to keep the kids away from the technology. And I'm not saying technology's bad, I'm just saying maybe they're on it a little bit too much at home, certainly, and a little bit at school. So, we try to be more, more of the stuff that you would have seen a few years back, and they love it. They absolutely love it. You walk around on a Fun Friday, and I invite every one of you to come anytime to the building, but if you would come on a Fun Friday between two and three, I think you would see some excited kids, and I think that's what it's all about. You have to keep them motivated, you want them to come to school, and this helps us out a bunch, Fun Friday. These were our community support, and I listed a whole bunch of them. And honestly, without these guys, there's a lot of stuff that we could not get done. Do you want to highlight the Victory Shine there, the car wash? That's the one that sits out there in front of the Walmart. He seems to come through for just about anything that we ask him for, and he sponsors not only our school, but I believe he sponsors quite a few of the schools in the county, so just a little bit of recognition for Victory Shine there. That's us, that's Stony Point, kind of in a nutshell. I know we were under a time of strain, I think I hit under ten minutes. I think I did. Somebody would have flagged us down. Do you guys have any questions, any concerns, Stony Point?
Thank you for what you're doing. I wrote down a couple of things there so I wouldn't forget them. You know, you mentioned about the family involvement. Glad to see you got the nights going on involving the parents. I remember when mine was in the elementary age, it's important at all age groups to do school, but especially elementary, it's nice to see you got the family involvement going on in the nights again, and also your community involvement. I mean, all of our schools have strong connections with communities. It's nice to see you highlight them on the list, that you're working with those community partners, because, I mean, they, everybody's got a bind in their communities and the county as a whole, and it's nice to see you making those efforts to keep that involvement.
Thank you.
Mr. Palmer, I've had a lot of history with Stony Point, as you know, and with students, and now I have a child working there, so I just want to thank you for what you do, and I hear so many good things from students and from staff, and they all love you, and so keep doing what you're doing, because they're, they seem to be happy and working hard.
Well, that makes me happy. Thank you. We had our chorus concert last night, and we probably had the best turnout that we've had. I mean, we're coming off of two years of COVID, but the excitement and the community, and again, it was just, it was really, really nice to see, and lots of compliments. Ms. Johnson, our music teacher, the parents were wonderful bringing their kids.
I saw a video clip. It was quite entertaining.
Yeah. We had some dancers, right?
I saw it.
We sure did.
It was good. It was good.
Yeah.
Great job.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Appreciate it.
All right, at this time, does any board members have any committee reports to present? Though it's a little bit of a slug time with the transition, new board members on, we'll discuss that here in just a second, but I will say the calendar committee's meeting, you know, that's, we've met a couple of times, I know, once, I think, since the last board meeting, but that work is ongoing process, so. Well, I'm going to get to bullet three, and I'll go ahead and roll over into that if there's no more committee reports. Board members, you have a sheet in your agenda packet tonight that lists all of our committees. New board members, I'll mention, there are several committees, and you'll notice that that list is blank. What we ask that you do is if you will list, maybe there's certain committees that you feel maybe a background, maybe you've been involved as a community member before, you might bring a strength to those committees. I would ask that you take those committee sheets and list in order, like say from one through six, eight, whatever you feel like, in order that you feel like would be the best committee to suit you. And what we'll do, we'll get together, and we'll assign committees, and by our January meeting, we will have committee assignments for everyone going into the, beginning of the next calendar year. Any questions on that? If you can, if you don't have to fill that out tonight, if you can fill it out and drop it by the Deborah, that way we can have them to be able to work on those committee assignments. All right, any questions on that? All right, that brings us to our superintendent's report, and I'll recognize Dr. Hefner.
Thank you, Chairman Robinson. This is also attached in tonight's agenda. I have wonderful news to share about some grants that have been awarded within the school system during the past weeks. Natasha Haas from Alexander Central High School received two grants from the North Carolina Outdoor Heritage Advisory Council to get her students outside and active. The first grant totaling two thousand seven hundred fifty dollars will be used to allow the senior AP Academy students to raft at the Nantahala Outdoor Center. These students were freshmen when the COVID pandemic began, and the rafting trip is a way to acknowledge their hard work and perseverance. The second grant totaling two thousand dollars will allow all AP Academy students to go to Kerrigan Farms in Mooresville to swim, hike, and participate in outdoor leadership activities. I would ask that when you see Mrs. Haas, you extend a congratulations to her. The second grant recipient was Liz Cronin from Sugarloaf Elementary School. She was awarded the Go! Grant. The grant totaled three thousand dollars and will be used to cover half the cost for the fifth graders from Sugarloaf to experience Camp Herring Ridge this spring. Again, please congratulate Mrs. Cronin. And then the last grant that I'll mention, J.D. Sink and Scotty Cook, both teachers in the CTE department at the high school, have been awarded a Duke Energy Grant totaling four thousand dollars for their plant propagation project. And again, congratulations to Mr. Sink and Mr. Cook. My second bullet, I am very pleased to report to the board that additional funding for the SROs has been approved by both the county commissioners as of last night and the town council as of last Tuesday. I anticipate officers starting in four of our elementary schools before Christmas break, and the three additional officers from the Sheriff's Department will start when they are hired, but most likely that's going to be sometime in January. Bullet three, I participated in some very informative governance training for the Head Start program today. Ursa Training is also scheduled to take place tomorrow. If any board members would like to learn more about the Head Start program and the guidelines under which they operate, you are invited to attend this training tomorrow. It starts at nine and will conclude at four. It will be held here in this room, and just please let me know if you can make it. Even if you cannot stay all day, I think that it would benefit you, especially new board members, to learn more about the program and, again, their guidelines. The fourth bullet, an appreciation reception has been planned for the outgoing board members, Matt Cooksey, Marty Loudermilk, David Odom, and Harry Schrum, on December twentieth from three-thirty to five-thirty. The event is floating, and all school system staff have been invited to drop in and thank these individuals for their service and support to the school system. I hope all of you will make plans to drop in as well. And then lastly, the excitement level continues to grow in each of the schools as winter break approaches. All facilities will be closed from Thursday, December twenty-second through Monday, January second. We have optional teacher workdays on Tuesday, January third, through Friday, January sixth. Students will return on a normal schedule on Monday, January ninth. And I want to take this opportunity, excuse me, to wish all the students and employees a very Merry Christmas, and I look forward to seeing you again in the new year. Thank you. Any questions?
I'm glad to see some more grants. We've got several administrators in the room, you know, it's like, I think you've made the statement before, you know, the grants aren't awarded if they're not written.
That's acceptable.
And, you know, it takes a lot of time, administrators, I know y'all are involved sometimes with the information asking for your budget, and some of y'all have even probably been involved some in the past, but it is amazing to see that grant money come in to supplement the budgets. And also, you know, the resource officer part, that's been something, you know, as long as I've been on the board for two years, I'm glad to see that, and as a parent, I'm glad to see that.
And that was an initiative that actually happened from within the central office. A grant was written, and it was a safety grant, and we were awarded forty-four thousand dollars from the state per officer. Now, that doesn't cover all of the salary benefits, equipment, car, everything that would be needed for a resource officer, but forty-four thousand gets us started. So, we're very grateful to have those safety grants. We are funded this year as well as the twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty, excuse me, as well as the twenty-three, twenty-four school years, the two-year commitment. After that, I can't speak to what the state will do, but my hope is, is that's something they'll continue to do. And I would like to thank our county and town for providing the rest of those funds. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. At this time, I'll recognize Sharon Mahaffey, our Chief Financial Officer for Unfinished Business, the Proposed Board of Education Policy Revision, second reading.
We have two policies up for second reading tonight, operation of the school nutrition services and disposable, excuse me, disposal of surplus property. I would like to ask for approval of disposal of surplus property tonight, policy sixty-five sixty. Would like to do a little more work on sixty-two twenty.
Okay. All right, board members, do I have a motion to approve Board Policy sixty-five sixty, disposal of school surplus property?
Second.
Board Member McLean made the motion, second by Board Member Ryan. All those in, excuse me, is there any discussion? Any discussion? All right. All those in favor of passing Board Policy sixty-five sixty, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. You'll bring a sixty-two twenty back next month. All right. And Ms. Mahaffey's going to stay with us now, we'll go to new business. Proposed Board of Education Policy Revision. Uh, Proposed Board of Education Policy Revisions, first reading.
Okay, we have three policies that are up for first reading. Uh, sixty, uh, excuse me, seventy-six twenty payroll deductions, seventy-eight fifteen evaluation of non-licensed employees, and eighty-three twenty depositories. And I will seek, um, input on those and bring them back next month.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to recognize our Head Start Director, Ms. Kathy Nipp, uh, to present about our amended twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three Alexander County Head Start pre-K calendar.
Good evening, board members. While she's looking for the calendar, the calendar that was approved, um, by the board March of this year was actually short a few service days. Head Start requires that we have one hundred and sixty operational days for children each school year. And that calendar was short seven days. So I was able to look through the calendar that was approved and add those, those seven additional days without adding any days to the end of the school year. We were able to find four Head Start teacher workdays that now will be school days. Three other days were also workdays, but we're going to have early release days. And that is approved by Head Start that we can have those half, half-day schools as long as we meet three and a half hours or more per day.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's in the executive view. You can pull it up and see it.
Thank you.
All right.
So I'd like, um, approval for the revisions that were made to the Head Start calendar.
Okay, board members, uh, you have it, do have it attached to your executive, uh, side of your board docs. Do I have any, uh, do I have a motion to approve the amended Head Start calendar?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. A motion by Board Member Reese, second by Board Member Dagenhart. Uh, any questions or any discussion? All right, uh, do I have a motion to approve the amended Head Start calendar? Excuse me, do I have, uh, all those in favor of approving the Head Start calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, uh, we will enter into closed session for North Carolina General Statute one four three dash three one eight dot eleven A six. Thank you. Oh, do I have a motion to enter into closed session? Sorry.
Same thing.
Second.
Motion by Board Member Ryan, second Board Member McLean, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.